Second, because they're trying to get the YouTube feed up live.
I'm sorry, absolutely, we'll wait.
Looks like it's showing.
Let me know, let me know when you're ready, uh, technologically speaking.
Okay.
We're working on it, just hang on a second.
Just one minute, Steve, I'll let you know as soon as we have word on it.
Thanks very much.
Be known when you guys are ready.
I want the board to know that I'm calling in in order to save bandwidth so, uh, my wife can work from home while we're doing this.
You're a good man.
I know my role.
We all know that role.
I do show up live on YouTube, uh, when I look on my screen. That's helpful.
Do we have all the trustees on the line so we can, and the VPs?
We'll have to go. Yeah, Gavin's here.
Steve, Adam, oven?
What's saying it's going live here, so?
I just want to make sure we can go live now if we're ready.
Yeah.
Okay, they're ready on the other end, so. Okay. We're ready to go.
All right, um. I would like to call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees of Northern Michigan University, um, to order at, uh, 1:33 in the afternoon. We have four items on our agenda, uh, approval of an indoor agriculture program, reaffirmation of the approved December 2019 Board of Trustees initiatives, uh, a residence hall credit, and an informational COVID-19 update from President Erickson. The first item on the agenda is the indoor agriculture program. There was a meeting of the Academic Affairs Committee this afternoon at 1 o'clock. And, uh, Chair Hart, I'd like to have you, uh, please give a report on that, and if you have a motion, please do so then.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as mentioned, uh, today at 1 P.M., there was a meeting of the Academic Affairs Committee specifically to review, uh, the indoor agriculture program, um, which we had heard, uh, initial information on, um, in our December 11th board meeting. Um, the Academic Affairs Committee, um, did go ahead and, uh, review with, uh, Bob Esslinger, um, the current proposal for a pilot, a three-year pilot program. Um, this program, um, has been put in place with a collaboration of several different departments. Um, it will be offered as an associate through the College of, uh, Technology and Occupational Sciences. Um, I think it's a, a very exciting program. It is going to be one of the first known programs of its, of its kind. Um, and it will also, um, parlay itself very well into some of the existing programs that we have right now, such as, for example, uh, medicinal plant chemistry. Um, I would like to present a motion, uh, to the full board for, um, approval of the proposed indoor agriculture program.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve that program discussion.
Carrie, can you confirm that this went through all of the approval process?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Before we go on to the next one, I did want to say that we should call the roll. Uh, would you please do that, Kathy? I should have done that earlier.
Certainly. Trustee Fatante?
Here.
Trustee Hart?
Here.
Trustee Haveman?
Here.
Trustee Mahaney?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell?
Here.
Trustee Marie Brown?
Here.
Trustee Savoy?
Here.
Trustee Young?
Here.
We do have a quorum, Chair Mitchell.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a reaffirmation of the, uh, board initiatives that were passed, uh, in December of 2019. Is there a motion for that?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make that motion. And I would like to make the following motion. The Board of Northern Michigan University recognizes that much has changed in higher education since it last met in December, and passed a number of new initiatives designed to drive enrollment and provide needed services to the Upper Peninsula and Michigan as a whole. Despite the change world, including the uncertainties surrounding the current coronavirus threat, the Board reaffirms the need for these programs and further recommits itself to their immediate implementation. The underlying reasons for these programs remain intact. Accordingly, the Board instructs the President and university leadership to implement each program following the timelines authorized in December, including the necessary investment in human resources.
Is there a second for that motion?
No, support it.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion.
I think this is really important, particularly now when we have these, this new delivery mode for education. It, it's very important that we support our students in all the different ways that they may need it. And I know that the student success coach measures and all of the student success pieces will be very important as we move forward. Rural health, obviously, I, all of these measures I think are going to be very important to us. So I think this is a, a very important thing for us to continue with.
Is there any other further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of comments on my motion. I think, uh, the question's been raised in light of the coronavirus and, and the, the massive socioeconomic impact it's having everywhere, including the U.P. And it's a valid question, is should we put these plans on hold? I believe, as I believe, uh, many of us do, that we must move forward now more than ever with these programs. The need for these programs is going to be greater than ever as we come out of the coronavirus, uh, uh, I don't know what to call it, the coronavirus, uh, times that we're living in. I've been witnessing firsthand over the last, uh, since, since March 11th, when this really hit. Um, many, many small businesses in the U.P. are struggling. Um, they're, they're, they're struggling just to stay alive, if you will, not to sound overly dramatic. But these programs, many of these programs are going to play a key role in rebuilding the U.P. economy and attracting new students to Northern. Secondly, Northern is in very strong financial shape. We are fortunate under the leadership of President Erickson and particularly, uh, our, our Vice President Leach, to have solid cash reserves, plentiful liquidity. This is a $5 million investment, we can adjust as we go. If, if, uh, circumstances, external as well as internal dictate, we can scale back. And lastly, I strongly believe that we have the leadership team in place that can make this a success despite the challenging times we're in. Both President Erickson and Provost Schilling have a tremendous track record in implementing and, uh, and bringing about new programs. So, uh, those are my comments, and I hope that this motion will pass.
Any other further discussion on this motion? Seeing no discussion on this, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. The chair votes yes, the motion carries unanimously. Uh, let me add to that, that obviously, uh, in the times that we are in, until the, uh, travel, regulations are changed, it's going to be very difficult to bring people on campus to interview for some of the positions that are open. However, it is the Board's hope that, uh, the, uh, that the staff will continue to do all steps possible, uh, up to the point of bringing people onto campus, uh, to interview them in a live way, including using technology such as Zoom. So, we're aware of some of the problems that you're, you're going to face, uh, but, uh, this too shall pass. Uh, and I think that, uh, that, uh, we will have an opportunity to put these in place, uh, uh, as long as we've got all the groundwork done, uh, prior to bringing them in for live interviews, so. Uh, appreciate that very much, uh, thank you very much for that motion, good discussion on that issue. Uh, the third item on our agenda, um, is the potential for providing a residence, uh, hall credit. Do I have a motion regarding that particular issue?
Um. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, to add if.
Or, or, we're having a little trouble with your, uh, hearing you, I'm sorry.
Okay, Steve, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, please read your motion.
Okay, uh, I move that the Board approve a $820 credit plus a carryover of any remaining dining dollars to the next semester to students living in the residence halls with the dining plan who decide to check out of their rooms before, and up to 5:00 P.M. on Friday, uh, April 3rd, 2020. The amount of the credit may be adjusted to reflect appropriate offsets for those receiving certain institutional aid having outstanding student account balances. Students can also forego the credit and opt to remain in the residence halls through the remainder of the semester, which ends on May 2nd, 2020. The administration is authorized to amend or adjust, uh, the checkout date and take, uh, all steps necessary to comply with any changes in federal or state requirements. Then a copy of these options, uh, should be on file, will be on file with the Secretary of the Board of Trustees.
Is there a second for that motion?
I support it. Mr. Jim?
It has been moved and seconded, discussion on this issue.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to just, just add that, uh, we, we've looked at this, the Finance Committee met and looked at this. And, you know, it's our belief that, uh, these are extraordinary times, and, um, this is an extraordinary, uh, measure for us, but that, um, we looked at several options. We believe this is the, the best option, not only to, to address the, the, the concerns and questions that the administration's getting, President, uh, Erickson and others, uh, but also it's, it's a, uh, we believe an economically, uh, feasible way for us to go at this point in time, given the uncertainty of the, of the, of the finances and the economy and everything else going forward. So, um, many other universities are doing this. This puts us, you know, uh, on par with what a lot of them are doing and how we're doing it. And I would just add one other thing is that, you know, we will continue to keep the campus open, and students have the option to stay on campus or to, to leave campus, which is an important point when we're talking about these, these refunds. Um, so I just want to reiterate that that's the plan moving forward, is that, uh, the, uh, halls will, will remain open as well as campus.
Do we have further discussion on this, uh, motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Seeing no nays, the, the chair also votes in favor of it, it passes unanimously, uh, to grant that credit. Before we go to the final point on the, uh, agenda, which is an, uh, COVID-19 update by President Erickson, um, Secretary Neme, we did post that we would waive, uh, in consultation with President Erickson. Um, the chair has waived the two-week period of time someone would need to make comments to this board. Did anyone, uh, want to make comments to the board, uh, today for, for this special meeting?
No, we did not receive any requests.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, I appreciate that. And again, uh, we want to be fully transparent in all things, which is why, uh, we did decide to waive that if anybody wanted to have that opportunity to speak. The final item on the agenda is an informational one. Um, as we all know, uh, the, um, COVID-19 crisis has impacted, uh, American life, and certainly Northern Michigan has not been exempt from that. Uh, before I introduce, uh, Fritz, I just wanted to say what a tremendous job that, uh, President Erickson has done. Provost Schilling, Vice President Leach, Vice President Van den Aben, uh, CEO of the Foundation Brad Canelli, the entire team, uh, in terms of how they've handled this. I want to give a special shout out to the faculty, the extraordinary job the faculty has done in, uh, going to remote, uh, instruction, online learning, almost overnight, uh, is, is truly amazing. They have really stepped up to the plate, did the best job they could as we continue to provide the same quality of education for our students as we provided in in-person classes. Um, we are really blessed with a faculty that cares about its students, that cares about instruction, uh, and that cares about, uh, making sure that, that, uh, the students at Northern Michigan University get the best possible education. Uh, the culture that we have at this university starts at the top, and, uh, and we've had just great leadership from, uh, Fritz Erickson since he became president five years ago. So, uh, again, I just want to congratulate everybody, and it's, and it, and it goes from, uh, from the president to the faculty, to the groundskeepers, and the cathedral staff, and to the secretaries, and to everybody in this university who's pulled together. Uh, we're all Ubers, we're tough, and we're going to get through this. Uh, and, uh, and Northern Michigan University is the type of place that will get through it a lot better than most because of the culture, uh, that we have. So, uh, with that, uh, Fritz, uh, why don't you give us, uh, the latest, uh, in the, uh, almost minute-by-minute change that takes place on this, uh, subject?
It is a minute-by-minute change, and I, I appreciate it. Uh, one of the things that's been very helpful, uh, for us is the Board willing, um, to be able to talk through a variety of issues. I appreciate, uh, all of your efforts in this as, as well. Uh, this is a time of a thousand details, and, uh, our entire team is really working through a whole series of, of, you know, what ifs, or this is a particular situation I'm in. I'm very gratified that our team is really taking a very, uh, hands-on approach. If a student has a question, if a family member has a question, it's directly addressed, uh, as we continue to move forward. Um, in terms of housing, I, uh, spoke with Jeff Corpey, uh, late this morning, uh, just to get an update on where we were. We're still holding about 80% of our, our students that are living in, um, uh, on-campus apartments, uh, have stayed. Uh, this is not a big surprise for us. We have still about 40% of our students living in residence halls are still here. Um, although we do expect that number to drop over the course of this week, uh, based on the Governor's executive, uh, uh, order. Um, our students are managing really well. If there was ever a concern that the quality of instruction or the workload would decline, that if there's been any concern expressed to us by students, um, by multiple students, it's been the online and the remote learning is taking a lot more time and effort and energy to do. And, uh, anybody that's worked in the online world knows that online isn't easier. Actually, online means much more work. And we're working through a variety of support mechanisms to be able to help students do that, through different forms of tutoring, different top forms of advising. Um, and again, our faculty and staff are really reaching out to make sure that our students are able to be as successful as possible. One of the tools that, uh, Provost Schilling and Academic Affairs, uh, worked through, which I, I thought was just an outstanding set of, uh, of efforts, was to provide an additional grading option for students, uh, and faculty that can be determined at the end of the semester. And that is that we can incorporate both grades and, uh, we, we use the term satisfactory, unsatisfactory, commonly known as pass/fail. Those options will be available for, for students to, uh, to explore with their faculty members, uh, in lieu of letter grades. And, and, uh, we think this is a really important tool for our faculty and students, and I think will help keep students on track and, and successful. So, very pleased about that. Uh, as we've dealt with the Governor's Executive Order, um, we've instituted an even more aggressive, uh, policy of work from home. And, uh, there are very, very few people on, on campus, uh, at this time, and those that are, appear to be all exhibiting appropriate social distancing. We've gone through each of the division leaders, each of the vice presidents has looked in their areas to determine which ones, which, which people really need to be on campus. And I've always been reluctant to use the term essential. We have a lot of people that are working from home that are doing very essential services right now. But some of our folks we really need to have on, on campus, and i- i- as, you know, things like dining, uh, uh, services, what's happening in the residence hall to provide those services. But wherever we can, we're really, really pushing that, uh, that envelope. And again, people are, people are stepping up and, and realizing that working from home can, can mean an awful lot of work. Uh, I know the, I know a lot of people I've talked to have spent so much time on the phone and on Zoom and being responsive, and, uh, it's, it's very well appreciated. That's my update, unless I'm forgetting anything, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Fritz, can I add one statistic for you?
Yes, please.
Um, just this morning at noon, we looked at our last seven days' usage of Zoom, and we logged 464,000 meeting minutes in the last seven days on Zoom through our classes and people on it. So that's a pretty astounding number.
Very, very good. I, I'm assuming our Netflix numbers are not increasing because they're studying so hard.
Of course not, of course not. But the system's been holding up pretty well, so we've been, uh, monitoring it regularly throughout, uh, the day, so.
Well, and I, I'm really appreciative, it's not just the support that, um, you know, our whole university team is providing to our students, but it's really community-based support. What the E.A.N. staff are doing to support, um, not only existing customers, but all of these new customers that are coming in, and people who desperately needed internet access. The fact that we're providing it, quickly approaching 6,000 families in the Upper Peninsula, uh, is, is really an important, um, important service that we can provide. I mean, it's, you know, in this, this time of social distancing, to social distance without internet access has to be an extraordinarily difficult thing to do. So, very appreciative of the work of folks like Chris Lewis and that whole team, uh, and Dave Mackey, and all those folks for keeping the system up and running and being responsive to, to community needs. Um, you know, we're, we've always talked about being able to take the E.A.N. to other rural communities across Michigan. I, I, I think there are a lot of people wishing that we would have been able to do that, uh, at this point for this kind of, uh, this kind of event.
Hey, Fritz, um, in late, when the, when the Governor issued the, uh, whatever we're calling this, stay safe, stay home, whatever it is, um, did you notice any kind of uptick in calls to you, uh, from parents about wanting to come and get their, their kids, or wanting their kids to come home, or, or not necessarily?
Uh, I think we're going to see an uptick, uh, of, of, um, uh, students moving, uh, out. Uh, Jeff Corpey thinks we'll go from about 40% down to about a third with it. If anything, though, I've received phone calls from, uh, parents I've talked to directly that are so appreciative that we have kept our dorms open. And, uh, there are a lot of folks that believe that their sons and daughters are a whole lot safer here than they are at a lot of places in Michigan and in, in other states. And so, uh, this is an important commitment for us and a commitment that we're, we're working hard to fulfill.
Yeah, if I could just ask one follow-up to that, how, how is the, the grab-and-go situation working in the dining halls? And can you just give us an overview of that?
Yeah, all indications Gavin and I went over last week, I, I haven't dared go over this week, but, uh, the grab-and-go, the dining staff is going to deserve enormous credit when the whole is said and done. They've figured out how to lay out the, the marketplace, or the Northern Lights Dining. Uh, so they let small groups of students in, they, they run through, they grab a box, they run through each station, fill up their, their boxes of food, they get one or two boxes, whatever they need, and then, uh, out they go back to their, back to their rooms. And that's worked really, really well. We've been able to follow the directives of the Governor in terms of not having, you know, open restaurants, and then, but still being able to feed our students. I don't know, Chris, have you heard anything, uh, other?
No, I, no, I haven't, I haven't heard any complaints from students, so.
Yeah, I haven't either.
Here.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions of Fritz, uh, as it relates to the COVID-19 update, or anything else for that matter?
I have a question with respect to the E.A.N. So are Chris Lewis and his team on campus so that they can deal with people who need internet access?
Yes, they are, they, uh, we have several on campus, and it's mainly to handle the equipment and delivery. We're doing free delivery of the units to the houses. Um, and, uh, we maintain a staff on campus, but we also have staff off-campus taking orders and, uh, service calls. We have students actually doing it from their homes, and the support staff, uh, they have a login system where I'll log into a tree that we can see, and, uh, um, it's been going quite well. We had, uh, last week we had 100 orders, uh, this week we're already at 100, and we're, what, Tuesday afternoon? So, um, things are moving quite rapidly, and, uh, it's, uh, it's really breakneck pace to keep up with the amount of orders that we're having, and the number of calls that we've had on E.A.N. But they're doing a, doing a really great job, both, uh, Chris, you know, leading that area, as well as, uh, his staff and students that work for him, been outstanding service to everybody.
Gavin, do you have equipment enough to respond to this?
Yeah, we have, um, about a 2,000-unit CP supply. So that's dwindled by a few hundred units this last week, and, uh, we're monitoring the inventory and preparing ourselves to have to order if we need to, uh, additional units.
Thank you.
Other questions, anybody has?
When will the, uh, the, the motion, the, the memo per the motion that we just passed today, Mr. Chairman, go out? Will that be tomorrow regarding, uh, credit?
We expect to bake that into a much larger set of announcements that I hope to send out within a half an hour.
Okay, all right, thanks, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, before we adjourn, I'd like to go around the room with the, uh, members of the Board for any comments that they have. And as I look at my screen, the first board member I have is Lisa, so let's start with you, Lisa.
Um, I just think everyone's doing a wonderful job in the, these crazy, crazy times. My office door is locked right now, but people are still trying to pick up their payroll and such. But, um, I think everyone's doing a great job, and I'm really appreciative of everything everyone's doing, so.
Terrific. The next one I see on my screen is, screen is Alexis.
Um, echo what, uh, what Lisa said. I mean, these are truly the most unusual times, um, unprecedented, um, for, for all of us, I believe. And I think it's just, uh, been incredible to see how people are pulling together, how quickly that they're continuing to adapt to the changing needs of our students and, um, the rest of the campus. So, just kudos to everyone, um, stay safe, stay healthy.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, uh, as Fritz was talking, uh, you know, putting on my old public health hat, I just like to think, you know, when it comes to this virus and communication, transparency, honesty, stability of one voice, integrity, I think Northern has really stepped up to the plate and, uh, in a, in a unified way. And I think, uh, I just appreciate the work that people's put into this. This is tough stuff. I've been through many crises when I worked for the Governors, and this is like 24/7 stuff. So, and I, I, I think we, we owe a deep debt of gratitude to the staff who've been working on this.
Steve?
Yeah, I, I certainly echo what everybody's said so far, without, without question. Um, I, I do want to just say a couple of things. I I do want to just say a couple of things that in particular, you know, given some of the financial implications and the impact this may have on the university. I really want to thank Gavin for for all his work with me and the Finance Committee and, you know, looking at this credit situation. And obviously Fritz is in there too for for his his help and helping us form this. And I think get a good product that we can release out today within an hour or so to the to the general public. But I also just want to say to the to the board that, you know, the Finance Committee is going to be looking at some of the longer term financial implications of what we've got. We don't have a crystal ball. We don't know where this is going. But, you know, one of the things that we've asked Gavin to do is provide us some different modeling so we can kind of plan for the future as best we can. And we look forward to working with Gavin and Fritz and his team on that and getting back to the board with something hopefully in the near future on that.
Terrific, thanks very much, Steve. Tammy?
I want to thank the faculty. I'm really impressed with what the faculty is doing. Tomorrow, I have a skill builder that I'm teaching on this Zoom format. And I can appreciate very much the difference in how you deliver this type of learning. And to see that all of our faculty have been gung ho in doing this and just converting so quickly to this new delivery method. I'm very impressed and and I'm excited to see that we have faculty who can be that nimble.
Thanks very much, Tammy. Donna?
Sure. I just want to say as a new board member, it's been awe-inspiring to see how hard everyone is working and how much thoughtfulness goes into every single decision and moment that people take in terms of making certain that everything is is going as as planned in a situation where you cannot really plan. It's it's totally unknown. I do want to say how amazing it is that with this social distancing, we've been able to be so connected as a people, as an organization here. But I also want to remind us that with the almost 100% access because of technologies that we can be on 24/7, that we take time to spend time with people who are important to us. That's our families. Those are our friends and staying connected in that way. But then, most importantly, making sure that we take care of ourselves emotionally and mentally. And taking time for yourself and self-care is utterly important during this time so we can continue to lead in these unprecedented times. But thank you for all you're doing, just like everyone said, it's been awe-inspiring to watch and to participate.
Robert, thank you, Donna, very much. Robert?
Just thanks to everyone at the university. As as everybody else has already said, I echo what they said. Everybody's responded responded in a great way and done yeoman's work to get us to the point we're at. I think that we've handled this crisis as good or better than any university that I'm aware of in the nation. And we should take some pride in that. The last thing is the U P being a tourism-based economy in large part. Tourism and hospitality is the largest part of our economy of any region in the state. Coming out of this is going to be really tough, and the university is going to play a big role in that. So forward-looking, I I hope that our leadership team can keep that in mind. We should be continuing to ask ourselves how we can help with the rebound when it comes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, former Mr. Chair. Finally, before we we adjourn, I'd like to really say how tremendous our students have been. This has been very difficult on this, very disrupting on their lives. And it has been especially disrupting on the seniors who were looking forward to their last semester at Northern Michigan University before they graduated. I'm sure I speak for President Erickson and his entire staff, as well as the entire board. We will have a commencement ceremony for the class of 2020. This will happen, and let me be very specific about that. It's very important. It's not going to happen, unfortunately, on May the 2nd. But we are going to have a commencement for the class of 2020. The 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 board has been tremendous throughout this. Fritz, your keeping all of us in tune with what's going on on a daily basis has been extraordinary. And I echo the words of Bob that that no one has handled this crisis better than Northern Michigan University. We're tough, and we're Ubers, and we're Wildcats, and it's always a great day to be a Wildcat. With that, I'll call the meeting to be adjourned at 2:07 on March 24th. Meeting is now adjourned.